Twenty-one Village Board meetings are ordered. May I have a roll call, please?
President Byrne, trustees Cook.
Here.
Forster.
Here.
Shane.
Here.
Marport.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Takaoka.
Here.
To nominate a president pro tem for this evening's meeting.
I motion for trustee Tom Cook to step in.
Second.
Aye, second.
Aye, second.
Roll call.
Yes, roll call, please.
Okay. President Byrne, trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Shane.
Aye.
All right, we have a quorum and everyone's here in the meetings are called to order, so would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, and indelible, just as it is with the Constitution.
Chief, you'll keep us surprised that the reason the mayor is not here is because of the weather west of here, his daughter, I guess, had a problem with, I guess, the winds in Crystal Lake were sixty, seventy miles an hour, so if you'll keep us surprised if anything is.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay. Any citizens wishing to address the board on something that's not on our agenda? And if you could state your name and address for us?
Hi, I'm Sheri Hedenberg. My address is eleven oh four Eisenhower Court, Vernon Hills. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I've been a resident here for twenty-four years. I put a little write-up together just to kind of, you know, get everybody on board. As the board members here know, I've written to you about a request for a job fair in Vernon Hills, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and the Lake County workforce. To get everyone else in the room up to speed, I just want to give you a brief intro as to why I'm here today and what prompted me to do so, then get into my proposal. Last of July, I attended a job fair in Elk Grove. About ninety percent of the jobs were blue collar or entry-level, white-collar jobs, and these roles did not apply to me. But having had the chance to get in front of one hundred and twenty employers all at once in one visit is what prompted me in going. Most employers right now are having a hard time filling jobs. I'm on LinkedIn every day and continue to read about the great resignation. Employees are making more demands for employers and what they want, and if they don't get what they want, they leave. Recruiters talk about being ghosted by candidates and then candidates accept a job, but then one with a better, then they take one with a better offer or conditions. I've been job searching for two years now. It's been challenging, especially for those who are over fifty, to land a job. Candidates are scrutinized for everything, and then you have week-long assignments that employers want you to present to move you through the hiring process all the way to the final round and still not get selected. While I was at the job fair, I overheard an employer exhibitor ask someone, "Why should we hire an older worker with ten years' experience when we can get a younger one, younger worker for a lot less?" I walked away because I did not want to get in an argument. And later, I came up with several ideas why we should employ older workers, and I don't think of myself as older. A few years ago, a few days later is when I came up with the idea to write to all of the trustees here. So I'm asking if you would consider having a job fair in Vernon Hills to support the Lake County company, to help them fill roles. I've been to job fairs, I already mentioned that part. Anyway, we need to encourage, also, we need to encourage local employers to hire local candidates. For example, a woman in my network has coworkers all over the country. A friend of mine has online meetings with coworkers in Japan and Italy. If employers can't find workers in the U.S., they will begin looking overseas. How many times have you called tech support, your credit card company, or the line to get redirected to someone in a foreign country? The trend will continue to grow upward if we don't find local candidates to fill jobs. We need to encourage employers to hire local employees. Imagine the negative impact that will, that will do to our community if we don't. People won't be able to pay their mortgages, buy from local businesses, communities will suffer, and the economic downfall will affect all of us. A white-collar product manager, job seeker, a friend of mine, David, supports my idea, and he asked me to share his thoughts. In-person interactions are vital to not only talent discovery and acquisition, but innovation. Applying online fails, too many reasons to list here. Many companies are not answering their phones due to COVID making networking impossible. Four, overseas outsourcing threatens white-collar jobs, the middle class, and our tax bases on our communities. David is a thought leader and has a speech on this to share before this body, the library, local business groups, or senior executives. I urge you to support Sheri's idea, as there are, there is a needing, growing need to help experienced job seekers. Lastly, I would be very happy to help in organizing the job fair. I've managed many trade shows, business meetings, and a fundraiser, so I'm well-qualified to organize such an event. Antonio Garcia, Business Services Manager from the Lake County Workforce, is on board with, with this. He said he was coming tonight, but I don't know if he's here. Thank you for listening to my proposal. I also received a phone call from one of the trustees tonight, which he's pretty much on board with this, but he was suggesting we wait until September sixth. And, well, it's going to take months, two months, to organize an event like this, just from, you know, the experience that I've had, excuse me, and the experience that I've had in, in organizing all of the trade shows, business meetings, and what have you. So that's my pitch, my proposal, and I hope that you will, you know, support me on this. And the village, you know, the residents, as well as all the local businesses. Any questions, comments?
Well, if we could, John, do you want to address this? Because I passed it on to you, and I, when I emailed you back, I told you I was passing on him because he's our person who handles much of this. Or, or Kevin?
Yeah, I can, I can address this. And Sheri, we spoke on the phone this afternoon. Tom shared your email to the board with staff. We reached out to our local Chamber of Commerce, the GLMV. Thank you also for getting involved with Antonio at the Workforce Development Group. We had a contact with him as well. And I believe Scott Adams at our GLMV was also in touch with the Small Business Alliance or group, Small Business Association. The common answer that we were getting is that, good idea, but wrong time. What we're seeing right now in, in the marketplace is there is an imbalance of demand for jobs and supply of labor. And so the recommendation that we've been receiving is that, see how the federal unemployment benefits are trending. If those get extended come September, that's going to, you know, essentially further enhance the, the climate that we're seeing. So at this point, we're kind of in a wait-and-see approach. Certainly something that we're happy to look into again later this fall and.
Well, like I mentioned, this is going to take about two, at least around two months minimum to begin organizing something like that. So then we're looking at, what, October? And honestly, I'm struggling. And a lot of people in my job search work groups are struggling too. Some of them have been employed longer than me, some almost the same amount of time. But I, like, you know, I gave all my, my reasons, you know. It took me an entire week to put a presentation, a project together to present to an employer. I got to the final rounds, and I still got rejected, and on, on more than one occasion. And being able to have a chance to get in front of an employer face-to-face is so much more important than having to go through the automatic, the applicant tracking system. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling, and so are a lot of other people. I don't care that they're saying that there's not, not enough employees. There are. We just need to get a chance to be able to get in front of an employer.
So Kevin, couldn't we just at least start dialoguing with, you know, like Antonio at the Lake County Workforce Development?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, like Sheri said, it's going to take a couple of months to set something up anyway.
Yeah, and again, our, our intention was to keep that communication going, to continue to monitor the, the trend locally and nationally. The, the concern that, again, these entities have, because, again, the village's role in this is really just to help facilitate. You know, we'll certainly get the groups involved. You know, the village staff is not going to be the ones actually putting the job fair on, this is mostly going to be our.
I'll be happy to work with the Lake County Workforce on this.
Yeah, and, and again.
I just need a place to have it.
Sure, and I think.
And I need it at low cost or for free.
Right, and I believe John had.
If I'm going to be able to put something like this together, because I don't have any money to do it.
Sure, absolutely. And I believe John had reached out to the Park District, maybe willing to share the Sullivan Center for this type of event. Our challenge right now is getting that, that business participation, you know, as you know.
I would also like to say that GLMV is, the Chamber of Commerce, they are predominantly small businesses. A lot of them are going to be hiring people that are in my network, you know? So that's why I'm, I want to work with the, the county to reach out to medium-sized and larger employers that's going to support people that need my services, my business, my professional services.
Absolutely, and again, I appreciate you, you coming in and sharing this idea. It's something that we're going to keep, keep our eyes on, and, and as we, we get more participation from these other entities, we'll be happy to, to reinvest that time and energy into.
Can I, can I ask you if there's a date that we can plan for?
Well, for now, for our, our deadline is September sixth. We're, we're monitoring that closely. Again, our, our assessment is that that's what's leading to this, this lack of supply of, of labor right now. We'll actually have an item on the agenda later this evening that speaks to that.
Well, come September sixth, these people are going to be banging doors open, and I'm talking about white-collar people.
Sure.
That, we're the ones who need, you know, we're the ones who are scrutinized. A blue-collar job person, they don't have to put presentations together. They don't have to go through panel interviews. They don't have to go through multiple, you know, four, five interviews with a corporation. You know, they, they, yes, they do have to go through the ATS, but they don't, they're not scrutinized for every small, the smallest detail. You know, they want someone to get in there and do the job and be physical about it. It, it's going to be easier for the blue-collar people to get a job than the white collars, from, from what I can see right now.
Well, and we'll have, we'll have staff, staff will stay on this, and.
Pardon me?
I say staff will continue to keep this, you know, on the burner and see what we can get done.
The, you know, the role of the village, as Kevin says, to help facilitate.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The, the role of the village here, as Kevin says, to help facilitate something like this, and I, you know, before offering up space, whatever we have, we can't put on the job fair, but we can host the job fair. And the, the thing is with job fairs, we have to make sure that those employers show up to the job fair, otherwise you have all these applicants, but no, so they do need time to kind of organize their.
Right.
Platforms to, to put on the job and be available, and everybody kind of have the same date in mind, whether they are in person or virtual. But I have, as a trustee, I have no problem supporting local businesses, local hiring, messaging by any means, but like I said, as Kevin said, we're, we can just be a facilitator or contact people to the GLMV or to the Lake County Workforce. So nobody, I just don't want you to walk out here thinking that you didn't get any kind of response from us, but, you know, it, you're here, you know, we are responding. So we can do what we can do, you know, we can't.
Can I get you to commit to a date?
I can't commit to a date because that's basically telling the employer when to show up. But I can definitely, we can, you just can't throw a date out there and just expect all the employers to show up. But whatever comes out of it, I think you'll, you'll see our support to make sure that it is happening, you know, and I get it, September sixth is a big deadline.
Well, that's where the Lake County Workforce comes in. We're, we're getting them to commit to the Lake County Workforce.
Have they given you a date?
Not to the village.
No, but has Lake County Workforce given you a date?
I'm just in the beginning conversations with Antonio.
Right, so, you know, to get everything organized.
You know, if you want me to get a date from him, I'd be happy to do so.
Well, that's not, like I said, like, we're here to help facilitate. So if you have a date and you need space on this date, and we have space, we'll provide you the space. That's pretty much kind of where our role is, correct? You know, and then just help with some messaging too.
If there's someone at the Sullivan Center I can communicate with to see what dates are available for such an, an event.
That would also be a park district.
A park district.
And I'll be happy to put you in touch with.
Pardon me?
I, I said I'll be happy to put you in touch with the executive director over there. I have your email, I'll, I'll be happy to follow up after the meeting tonight and.
Great, thank you.
And get you the information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other citizens wishing to address the board? If not, we have a number of proclamations. And as I read these, do you want me to go ahead and sign them? Because they all still need to be signed. Should I go ahead and sign them as pro tem, or? So we can hand them out, or do you want to?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. The first proclamation is for James Edward Schultz, who I know is here. In recognition of community caretaking and dedicated service to veterans, and being named the Illinois Amvet of the Year 2020-21, James Edward Schultz of Vernon Hills, Illinois. James Edward Schultz served our nation as a soldier in the United States Army from May nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-seven, in positions as First Cook and Recruitment Color Guard Commander, earning the rank of Specialist Six, receiving an honorable discharge. Jim began his service to the community as a village trustee, and served from May third, two thousand and five, to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, exemplifying the model of, of the community for the community. Jim continues to serve and support the community to include advocacy for veterans through membership in both the American Legion Post twelve forty-seven and Philip Carpenter Amvets Post sixty-six, and actively lobbied the state legislature in support of House Bill thirty-three seventy-two, which limited the lowering of the U.S. flag to half-staff. Jim completed the Amvets Suicide Prevention Intervention Course, becoming the first member of Post sixty-six Amvets Heal Team. Jim is a strong advocate and supporter of the Midwestern Veterans Closet, a resource for those experiencing homelessness or who are in need of food, clothing, or other essential services. And Jim enlisted the support of various stakeholders to ensure this need is met. Jim's community service also includes support for inpatient resident, veterans' residents at the James Lovell Federal Medical Center, support for Because We Care Day, in which personal hygiene supplies and other items are collected and brought to the veterans at the hospital. Jim has organized and led recreational activities for veterans at the hospital, to include bingo, and in the spirit of leaving none behind, Jim provides comfort and compassion to the residents at the VA hospital. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Roger L. Byrne and the Board of Trustees do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to Mr. James E. Schultz for earning the distinction of Illinois Amvet of the Year for his community caretaking, advocacy of veterans, and his continued service to those in need. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you. First off, I need to say, you got to remember, twenty twenty was the COVID year, so it was a pretty low bar. But with that being said, I need to thank this board, the staff at the Village of Vernon Hills, because one of the things that allowed me to be recognized downstate was the proclamation that we started here on House Bill thirty-three seventy-two. Based on getting that passed by this body, we were then able to take it to other American Legion, VFW, and Amvets posts who also passed resolutions. And based on that groundswell, we were able to work with Dan Didich, the state rep, who got the bill through committee and the House, and then our state senator, Adrian Johnson, who got it through committee. But this was a pretty busy year in the Illinois Legislature, in that there were six hundred and thirty-two bills passed this year as opposed to the previous year of twenty twenty, when there were, I think, thirty-two bills passed. They were doing a lot of catching up, as the chief is well aware of with a number of the criminal justice bills. So with that being said, I got to work with a lot of great people down in Springfield, and so my name got recognized. And I was lucky enough that my post, the Philip Carpenter Post sixty-six in Wheeling, recommended me for this award, and the convention so voted it. And just to prove, I did bring the plaque that says, Illinois Amvet of the Year. Just to give you a little background on Amvets, Amvets is one of the, the big six. You've got the Paralyzed Veterans, the DAV, the Disabled Veterans, the American Legion, the VFW, and the Amvet, and Wounded Warriors. We're considered one of the, one of the six key players with regard to supporting veterans and veterans' needs. And Amvets has been around since nineteen forty-four, and in fact, this post has been around since nineteen forty-seven. And the Amvets is an organization that you'll hear about typically with clothing drives and things of that nature, but we do a lot of other good works, and it is the most inclusive. All you need to have is a DD two fourteen, which is kind of your, your permanent record, so to speak, and an honorable discharge. So we are very inclusive with regard to our membership. And it isn't, like I said, an outstanding organization. And if there are any veterans out there watching this video, please come join us. We meet on the second Tuesday of the month. I am foregoing that meeting to be here tonight, but we are always looking for new members to work, to facilitate an improvement in veterans' lives after they've served the country. So with that being said, thank you for this honor, and I, I appreciate it. Without any further ado, I'm going to go home before it rains.
I think you.
Thank you.
I missed that.
I wouldn't have spoken as long if I would have known that. Thank you again, appreciate it.
Take care, Jim.
Our second proclamation is for the Epstein family and Scott, is it Soroka? Am I pronouncing that correctly? Okay. In appreciation for their life-saving efforts and outstanding display of community caretaking.
Oh, so before you do that?
Yeah.
Can I say a few words? Before the proclamation?
Before the proclamation?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, because I want to, I want to make sure the story's told on why, you know, I, I brought, I, everyone is familiar with what happened in Mundaline. They were acknowledged in Mundaline, but I've known the Epstein family for almost twenty years now, and, you know, the, they, they should be acknowledged anyway. I mean, they're, they're integral part of our community. I mean, you know, Dustin, he's a lifelong softball coach. He's coached his kids in a lot of sports, whether they appreciated it or not. I can empathize with that. You know, he's a, he's an executive committee member on the Sedol Foundation. But really, you know, his wife, Jamie, I mean, Jesus, she's done a, a ton of stuff in the community. She wrote a grant to DC to get funding for the Stand Strong Coalition that still exists, that she passed off, that she started at Stevenson, and, you know, affected kids in this corridor as well, who go to Vernon Hills as well. Passover meals, I know they got us involved in delivering Passover meals in the city. But, you know, one thing about Jamie, and, you know, she, you know, she really is an inspiration, I mean, Jamie is the type of person that donated a kidney to a complete stranger in a pay-it-forward sort of situation, where she donated a kidney to someone and they in turn donated a kidney to someone. So the thing is, actually, I, I almost want to benchmark something. It used to be on the news, it was someone you should know, they had it on the news, you acknowledge people in the community, because there's, there's, there's a lot of other people in this community who should be acknowledged, but I think we should start by making this sort of a routine, Kevin. People could send in nominations, like, here, here's someone you should acknowledge in the community. We could start it with the Epstein family. But I want Dustin to tell the story of what happened that day and why they're here as well.
Let me read the proclamation.
Oh, then you want to do it? Okay.
Yeah.
The kids are very lucky, by the way.
On Sunday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, while voting on Diamond Lake, the Epstein family noticed a group of people waiting in the water near the boat launch. Jamie Epstein observed one of the women waiting in the water to be in great distress, and learned a three-year-old child had stepped off the end of the boat launch and become submerged in the water. The Epstein family, including Dustin, Hannah, and Sammy, quickly jumped into the water and swam to the boat launch to provide assistance in searching for the child while Emma called nine-one-one. Scott Soroka, who had just launched his kayak from the launch, observed the Epstein family searching the area around the dock. He turned his kayak around and also jumped into the water and began feeling his way along the murky lake bottom. Scott Soroka located and pulled the child from the lake, and along with Hannah Epstein began performing life-saving CPR. Due to the immediate search efforts of the Epstein family and location of the child by Scott Soroka and the life-saving efforts of Scott, Hannah, and the Mundeline Fire Department paramedics, a life was saved and a family preserved. Therefore be it proclaimed that Roger L. Byrne and the Board of Trustees do hereby express our sincerest appreciation to the Epstein family, Mr. Scott Soroka, and the Mundeline Fire Department first responders for their collective efforts in saving a life.
Thank you.
I, I think the story was told there, so you got it correct. I always taught my kids to jump in and help somebody if they saw somebody in need, and I'm very proud of them because that's exactly what they did, after I yelled at them to jump in the water and help the girl. So thank you so much for honoring us today, and we're just so thankful that we were there and could help this three-year-old survive a really bad situation. So thank you very much for having us here.
And thank you for, I mean, people don't understand CPR and stuff like that, you should know it. I mean, I, I, in fact, I'm up for my recertification a week from Friday, I've got a class to go to. I keep it recertified. Fortunately, I've never had to use it, and I'm, and I'll be real happy if I never use it. But it's one of those things you need to know, and, you know, I, I would rather know it and not use it than need it and not know it. And it's, and it's so important for people to get involved like you did, and so thank you so much.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I just want to echo that thought. I've been through CPR training, as Craig mentioned, I was a coach, and I went through CPR training. My daughter Hannah, who administered the CPR training, was a lifeguard and went through the training. And whenever you go through this training, they say, you're not going to remember everything. And in this situation, we didn't remember everything, but we remembered enough to make a difference in the situation, and it's all that counts. So when you're in the class, pay attention as much as you can, try and remember what you can, but when you're in that situation, you just have to be calm and administer what you can and help out to the best of your ability, and we're thankful that we were able to do that. And thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready, smile, one, two, beautiful, thank you.
Thank you again. And thank you for coaching.
That's a job in itself.
Yeah. Okay. A proclamation congratulating Ethan Johnson on the earning of the rank of Eagle Scout. Ethan Johnson is a life Boy Scout, and the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest honor to be bestowed by the Boy Scouts and stands for the ultimate representation of citizenship and good character. Ethan's Eagle Scout project was constructing bird and bat houses that were installed in the Vernon Hills Park District and other areas. Ethan received his Eagle Scout rank in a Court of Honor in twenty twenty, with recognition of his personal dedication and extraordinary achievement. Now therefore Roger L. Byrne and the Board of Trustees of the Village Vernon Hills hereby proclaim that Ethan Johnson should be congratulated and honored for earning the rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, COVID definitely, I didn't think I was going to. Especially when COVID hit, I was so close to my birthday. I was so close to my birthday, and like, once you become 18, you can't become an Eagle Scout, and I was fortunate enough to have my Scout Masters and them all supporting me every step of the way, and I couldn't have done it with my family's support, without my family's support. It's not just my award, it's everybody's, and I just want to say thank you to everybody that helped me. Thank you.
Congratulations. Ethan? Ethan?
Oh, sorry.
Here's your copy of the proclamation. A proclamation congratulating Thomas Rose on earning the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Thomas Rose is a Life Boy Scout, and the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest honor to be bestowed by the Boy Scouts and stands for the ultimate representation of citizenship and good character. Whereas Thomas' Eagle Scout project consisted of staining a bridge and repairing benches inside gazebo's located at the Arbor Theater. Thomas received his Eagle Scout rank in a Court of Honor in 2020 with recognition of his personal dedication and extraordinary achievement. Now therefore, Roger L. Byrne, President, and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills hereby proclaim that Thomas Rose be congratulated and honored for earning
Thank you so much for the recognition. It certainly means a lot. As I'm sure many in the community know, and as I know Ethan knows, as well as Mr. Jones, our Scout Master, the amount of work and the undertaking that is required to become an Eagle Scout is certainly quite a challenge, and it really does mean a lot to have the support of the community and of my family and friends and everybody else who was there as I really completed a very big step in, you know, in my life. It's going to really, I think, help me in the future as I, you know, move on to college and beyond. So again, I'd like to say thank you for the recognition.
Congratulations. Okay. And one last proclamation. Proclamation of Payroll Week? Yeah, you guys can go. We won't make you stay for the rest of the meeting yet.
If you stayed, you'd get another Eagle Scout.
Proclamation Payroll Week, September 6th through the 10th, 2021. The American Payroll Association and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the nearly 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system of paying wages, reporting workers' earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. Payroll professionals in Vernon Hills play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Vernon Hills, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, carrying out tax withholding, and reporting and depositing. Payroll departments collectively spend more than 2.4 trillion annually complying with the myriad of federal, state, and wage tax laws. Payroll professionals play an increasingly important role ensuring the economic security of the American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents, making sure they comply with their child support mandates. Payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both business and community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding systems. Payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving the compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost to both government and businesses. The week in which Labor Day falls this week has been proclaimed National Payroll Week. Therefore, be it proclaimed by Roger Byrne, the President, and the Village of Vernon Hills, we do hereby proclaim that September 6th through 10th, 2021 is Payroll Week in the Village of Vernon Hills. And I know everybody who's got a job, payroll people are some of your favorite people. Okay. Next item is Village Manager, the announcement about a special board meeting.
Yes, thank you. Just as a reminder, we do have a special Village Board meeting on August 24th at 5:00 PM. At that meeting, we will be hopefully approving a bid award for the intersection improvements along Milwaukee Avenue to provide east-west access between Hawthorne Mall and Melody Farms. Second, I just did want to provide a recap on our storms we had from Sunday evening. Looks like I might be doing another recap at our next board meeting potential here. But as you know, we did have some severe weather come through the village on Sunday afternoon, especially the southwest part of our community was hit pretty hard with some high winds and heavy rains. Fortunately, our Public Works crew were dispatched immediately on scene and were able to remove tree limbs that were hanging in the street and clear all of our covered cash basins. And within a few hours of the storm, the streets were cleared and safe for travel. Our municipal golf course did also receive some heavy impact. We have very large trees that were downed as part of that storm. This week, our Public Works crew and partnership with Vernon Township have been working to remove a lot of those trees and downed limbs. Also want to extend a thank you to Vernon Township and the Park District for their help this week. They've been helping our crews with their chippers, clearing branches and chipping trees. We do have a street sweeper coming into town beginning tomorrow to start clearing some of the road from Sunday storm and probably the storm going on right now, leaves and debris and things like that. And then lastly, just as a reminder for our residents, Public Works will be making rounds this week and next week to remove any private property tree limbs that you can drag to the curb. So if you have any downed tree limbs, please get those to the curb, and our crews will come by with the chipper and take care of those for you. So that's all for that.
Yeah, and I've seen the guys out working, they're doing an incredible job. It's been really tough on them, and add in the fact that they're doing all that in this incredible heat. The guys that were working out here earlier today, it was very warm. Anything else? Anybody on staff have anything, any other speaking parts? Okay, hang on one second. Okay, and if not, the next thing is, omnibus vote agenda? Is there a motion to approve items A through K?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Marport?
Aye.
Horser?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Shank?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. There's no unfinished additional business, so we'll move to new business and communication. Approval and passage, hang on one second, I'm scrolling through here. Approval and passage of ordinance 2021-109, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances in the Village of Vernon Hills regarding the dispensing of alcoholic beverages.
I'll take this one. Thank you. So this came to us as a request from our local restaurants. Currently, the village code has the age of 19 as the age to be eligible to serve and dispense alcoholic beverages. The state law is actually 18. We're unclear of the history of why it's 19 in Vernon Hills and not 18 for the state law, but the request from our local restaurant establishments was to reduce the age to 18, which will hopefully help them in recruiting additional employees to their establishments. You know, if you can be 18 years old versus 19, you have essentially more of a larger work pool that you can pull from now. So staff is recommending approving this ordinance before you. This will do two things. This will put the village code in line with the state law and also allow for more recruiting opportunities for our local restaurants.
Okay. Any comments or questions from any board members? This is merely bringing us in line with state law, so it's, yeah. All right, if there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Marport?
Aye.
Horser?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Shank?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, approval and passage of an ordinance 2021-111, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the village's allocations of the American Rescue Plan Act funds pertaining to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund for the Village of Vernon Hills.
I'll take this one as well. As I'm sure you're all aware, this past March, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law, a $1.9 trillion stimulus package in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. As part of that package was funding for local governments to respond to the coronavirus pandemic. The Village of Vernon Hills is currently allocated $3.6 million of funds to receive. Since we're a non-entitlement unit of government, which is essentially a local government with a population below 50,000, our funding is coming directly through the state of Illinois. That's being administered through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. The funding is going to be allocated in two installments. The first installment coming in 2021, right around now, the second installment next year, about a year from now. So staff at the end of July applied for our first round of funding through the state. We're hoping to receive that sometime in the next 30 to 45 days. The ordinance before you this evening will be ratifying that request for the funding as well as authorizing the approval of two agreements that were necessary as part of the application. So next steps for us, once we receive the funding, currently right now, the U.S. Treasury is still finalizing the rules on the use of the funds. There's essentially four primary categories. You can use it to, you know, implement guidelines and protocols within your organization to reduce the spread of coronavirus. You can use it to replace lost revenue. It can go towards stabilizing local economies by either providing assistance to households or businesses, and then it can also go to things like watered sewer infrastructure and broadband expansion. So at this point, Waterbuck and Amen has done a preliminary analysis of our revenue loss. At this point, we believe that if we so choose down the road, we could apply for the full funding for lost revenue. We have about a little over $8 million of lost revenue based on the calculation that the Treasury has provided. We're eligible for the 3.6. So our plan is to wait for further guidance from the Treasury, let the FAQs and the rules come out into a final form, and then the intent to come back to the committee of the whole at a future meeting to have a discussion on the use of those funds with the board.
Is there, will there be a deadline when to use the funds by?
Yeah, so the deadline to allocate the funding is the end of 2024. To actually expense the funds is the end of 2026. So we do have, we do have some time.
Did we receive a request from any other entities asking for a share of those funds? I thought we had.
The one I'm aware of to date is from the Park District. They requested, I believe, I think it was $1.8 million. There is a letter from their president to the village.
That's what I thought. That was a month or two back, or a while back that we received that. Okay.
And those will all be things we take into account when we?
Later on.
Later on, when we find?
Yeah, our plan is, once we have, you know, the challenge we have right now is the guidelines are still coming out. There's not a final rule from the Treasury right now. They're the interim final rules. The FAQ page on how to use the funds is right now about 42 pages long, so our hunch is that in the next 30 to 60 days, a lot of towns are going to start asking the same questions, and we'll have more clarity on how we can, how we can use those funds.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item three, the Hawthorne 2.0 time capsule.
Did we get a motion and second?
We had a motion to, uh...
Oh, you want a motion to, oh, we didn't...
For the ordinance, yeah.
Sorry? I did not know that.
So what exactly does it mean then by accepting the allocation and that's the title of the ordinance?
This is just authorizing our request for the funding. There were two, there were two forms that we had to sign as part of the request. The first was that we would agree to the terms and conditions for the use of the funds. The second was a compliance with the civil rights requirements that went with the ARPA Act.
And the ordinance, and I review these, and further, the ordinance grants the village president and the manager authority to execute additional forms that will be coming our way as the regulations get further defined in order to accept the money. So this is, the ordinance ratifies the execution of those documents and, again, authorizes staff to take further action necessary to accept the funds.
So the wording of a motion, you're just looking for approval of this ordinance?
That's correct. And just to verify as well, there was a September 30th deadline to request the funding, and so in the interest of time and our modified board schedule over the next few months, we decided to move forward to make sure we got our place in line for the funds rather than let that go by.
Okay.
What determines the dollar amount?
It's a population-based formula.
Population?
Yeah.
Okay, and a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Marport?
Aye.
Horser?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Shank?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, item three, Hawthorne 2.0 time capsule.
As you know, Hawthorne Mall reached out to the village earlier this year regarding hosting a time capsule at the mall. Shortly after, the communications team began a campaign to solicit feedback from the village board, staff, and the community through our social media platforms. As I'm sure you will all agree, the village's community partners help make Vernon Hills the exceptional community that it is, and the village takes great pride in these relationships, and therefore felt it was important to give them the opportunity to participate in this project as well. And that includes the Park District, Countryside Fire Protection District, District 73 and 128, Libertyville Township, the GLMV Chamber of Commerce, and Cook Memorial Library District. Communications team member Lynn Brandl drafted a letter on behalf of the village board that was included with the transmittal for your review. Village board members are encouraged to share additional comments to be incorporated into the letter, which the community will read 50 years from now. This is a great opportunity to communicate with our future leaders and the community members when the time capsule is opened in 2071. Hawthorne will purchase and brand the 55-gallon, three-foot-tall stainless steel barrel. Items will be delivered to the mall by the end of the month, and the capsule will be activated during the September 18th Hawthorne 2.0 Fall kickoff event. It will be similar to their groundbreaking event, but because of the pandemic, the public was not invited to participate in that groundbreaking ceremony. So this will be a public event. There'll be live music, food trucks, a kid's zone, and village staff and the board is encouraged to attend. It will be held outside in the outer AMC lot at the mall, and that's pending approval of the special use permits, which I believe are scheduled to be on the board agenda for approval September 9th. The village board, again, and the village staff are encouraged to attend the time capsule activation, which will include a photo opportunity of the burial of the time capsule, as well as an opportunity for speeches for Hawthorne and village officials. The items that have been collected thus far, a face mask and a patch from the Vernon Hills Police Department, as well as a replica of a gas-powered police squad, a framed photo of the entire Countryside Fire Protection District organization, as well as a CFD coin, trading cards, and a COVID-19 commemorative pin. District 128 provided a Class of 2021 commencement ceremony booklet identifying each member of the graduating class, as well as a t-shirt, face mask, 2021 state cheerleading competition medal, and a vehicle decal with the Vernon Hills Cougar logo. District 73 included a coin and a yearbook for each of the middle school classes 2021. Cook Memorial Library provided news articles and a copy of their newsletters from 2010, highlighting their grand opening, as well as a newsletter from present day. Also included is a coffee mug commemorating their 100-year anniversary. The Park District included a mask, a bracelet, news article, and a copy of their 2021 Fall Program Guide. Libertyville Township shared a number of documents, including the Liberty Prairie Reserve Master Plan, their Open Space and Road District annual reports, social service report, and a letter to the community. a letter to the community. The GLMV Chamber plans to contribute a 2021 directory guide including, reflecting the current business landscape, which will be interesting to see what it looked like in 50 years. The Village Pageant also shared a photo of their 2021 Vernon Hills Queens, which has been laminated for inclusion into the capsule. It should come as no surprise that several members of the community suggested including a face mask, a hand sanitizer, a thermometer. The Village will also be contributing newspapers from January 20th, Inauguration Day, a Vernon Hills Dining Guide, Visit Lake County brochure, a $20 bill, and an iPhone. The Village will make one final push to the community for feedback, and the Village Board is also welcome to share any of their ideas as well. We'll have more information for you on the September 18th kickoff event, and we hope to see you all there. Any questions?
Like in here, with the mayor, everyone, all of you, staff, with the mask and without. Dr. Oppenheim will be like 110 in 50 years. I mean, geez.
That's a really good idea. I think we could probably, I think we can probably make that happen at the next board meeting. Oh, at the special
The 24th meeting, or when do they need it by?
So, they are asking for it by Labor Day, but if we give it to them prior to the event, they're absolutely fine with that.
You can just throw it in when you're
There you go. But, so, at the special board meeting, which is the 24th?
In two weeks.
If you'd like to dress to impress, we can plan on taking a board picture then.
What's the date, again, of the event?
September 18th, from noon to 2:00 PM. They are coming to the next board meeting to request a special use permit for that event.
So, we can get a picture anytime, because I don't think I'm going to be here the 24th.
The mayor's not here today, so I don't think it'll work.
He might still be mayor.
We can Photoshop you in.
Yeah, we'll Photoshop you.
How about a sign of Vernon, you know, Vernon Hills and the population, the current population?
Well, that's a great idea.
That's a great idea. Can I make a suggestion that Lynn's letter was nice, but I would like to see, including at a minimum, all of the department's names and your name and everyone else, and not, not just the trustees and
No, I meant everybody.
I mean, if we can, like, just have everyone's name who works for the Village and
Sure, that's a great idea. Yeah. And you're welcome to contact me if any suggestions, any ideas pop into your head. Anytime.
Has anyone else written anything, or are we relying on Lynn's?
Well, we can probably also throw in maybe a couple of those aerial photographs that Dave has found for us that the county has, you know, that either, either could be then and now, put in both when it first started, you know, they have that one from 1974, which was
Oh, yeah.
When the mall first opened, and then we could have one from now.
Okay. Great ideas.
How's about election signs?
You got extra.
I got extra.
Yeah, yours are all over the, yours are, we're blowing in the wind the other day.
I have one in my backyard facing Butterfield Road. I'm going to bring one in.
Made it through the storm.
I think one hit me in the head the other day as it was flying by.
How old will you be?
104.
Okay, valid.
I'll be dead. I could live to 104.
Hmm. Keep doing the yoga.
Exactly. I may be here.
Hey, you never know.
How big is this?
It is 55 gallons and three feet tall.
Pretty big.
All right. Anybody have any other suggestions? Okay, if not, I believe that's all we have tonight and no Committee of the Whole, correct? All right?
There is an executive session.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For, if we, if we get a motion to, during the regular meeting, go into executive session to discuss personnel, pending litigation, and review of executive session minutes.
Okay, do we have a motion to that extent?
So, ma'am?
Okay. Roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Marport?
Aye.
Horser?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Aye.
Shank?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned, and we will not be conducting any business after the executive session.